Good evening. I call this Fairfield County Council meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, April 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I so moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved 5-0. I'd like to state that Ms. Bertha is with her husband, Mr. James, also. He's still not doing too well. And also, Mr. Trapp is recovering from surgery. Next, we have the invocation, Councilmember Paul.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this council meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion and make decisions that is in the best interest of Fairfield County. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Next, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes dated March 25th, 2019. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's approved 5-0. No public presentation. Next, first public comment session. Ms. Davis, do we have anyone to speak?
We have two speakers tonight. First, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on Section 30-4-70A, 5, South Carolina Code of Laws.
Thank you. Also, I'll just make a quick announcement during public comment session. You know, council expects citizens to adhere to the rules set forth. So, administration had been advised that if the rules are not gonna be followed, to ring the bell. Next.
Shirley Green, District 2. When I took a look at the agenda today, I noticed that under executive session, you had a legal matter discussing -- discussion regarding the potential changes to contractual provisions as to local industry and receipt of legal advice in accordance with Section 30-4-70A, 5 of the South Carolina Code of Law. Just in case people were wondering what that relates to, it relates to the Freedom of Information Act. And I'm hoping that as a public body, as you take a look at understanding and getting clarification on the disclosures regarding executive session, that you make sure that transparency is always a part of that. Our citizens deserve to know if there are possible items that are discussed in executive session are not done properly. And if we have to have review of that, we have to make sure that the proper sections of the law are invoked in terms of whether or not an individual or an entity is disclosed when you're making discussions regarding industries coming to the county. I know that it has been done very well in the past, you know, when we've had industries that have come that you did not have to tell the public who they were or what entities were involved. I just want to make sure that when this occurs, when you are taking a look at that provision, which pretty much the provision that you have listed here, and if I could read that provision for the public here. Sorry, I'm trying to get that right here. "Discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. The identity of the individual or entity being discussed is not required to be disclosed." So, I just want to make sure that as you discuss those things and get legal advice, that the public is not left out of discussions as to public disclosure, as well as being informed in terms of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on the budget.
I feel naked because Randy's not here. But talk about the budget. When you present the budget, is it on a website before it's announced to the public? Do we have that privilege of seeing it? And if so, or if not, I'd like you to advise us of how we can look at the budget before it gets approved. And I'm presuming that tonight, we're talking about the budget that you're going to approve. Is that correct? I think of myself as a relatively intelligent person, relatively. Depends on who likes me and doesn't like me. But on the same token, I don't know a lot of things. And I don't understand a lot of things completely. Ms. Green just really pronounced an important issue, that transparency of what's happening exactly, specifically, so that all of us in the peanut gallery get a good picture of what's happening, that's important to us, your constituents. We need to know, especially with the budget, especially what goes on in executive meetings. I'm gonna shut up real quick, but I want to say one last thing, and you can ring the bell on me if you like. Randy comes up here almost every week, and for years, and been advising the council, the administration of important things. And personally, for me, he puts a lot of his time and energy to try to help the community. I never hear anybody go, "That was a good point. Thank you." He's not here tonight, so he doesn't hear this, but I think the county and somebody oughta give a pat on the back every once in a while. Thank you.
That concludes Segment 1.
Thank you. There are no public hearings. Now down to ordinances, resolution, and orders. For Item A, we're gonna table that due to -- table to the next meeting due to information we received about 2:00 today. If so, if that's okay with council, unless we want Mr. Morgan to give us an explanation as to why.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The Ordinance 711, which was for third and final reading, it was an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and the Community Health Foundation of Fairfield County and other related matters. That lease is what's commonly known as the Martin Primary Care Clinic. Approximately 2:00 this afternoon, they reached out to me. Their council was some additional provisions that they would like included in the lease terms, given the time that it's basically too late to allow that to go forward at this meeting. Obviously, I want to make sure that those terms are favorable for the county, as well as to give the council plenty of time to be able to read and review that beforehand. I did speak with the chairman about that and indicate that it would probably be best that a motion to table that until the next meeting would be appropriate, so that way all of those changes could be included and reviewed by council before final approval.
Motion's been made to table Item A, third and final reading. It's been properly in seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's approved 5-0 to table that to the next meeting. Now down to Item B, first reading only by Title, Ordinance Number 720. Ms. Davis.
First reading by title only, Ordinance Number 720, an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019, to provide for the levy of taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to county government, and other matters related thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? Being that there's no public -- any opposed? It's approved 5-0. Now down to Board and Commission's Minutes. Received -- see, I skipped over, going a little fast again, Anna. We have Item C, Resolution Number 2019-4, a resolution affirming Fairfield County's commitment to fair housing. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? Let me back up. If I could, Mr. Taylor, just give us a brief discussion on this.
Certainly there. The federal and state government puts out certain requirements that counties and municipalities have to meet in order to qualify for federal and state funds, and this is one of them. Again, this is something we should affirm, but they do kind of twist our arm and say if we don't yearly recognize and reaffirm our commitment to fair housing, that we could lose accessibility to federal and state funds. So, this is something they issued us, and every year, we have to pass and should pass.
Thank you. Any councilmember having any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's approved 5-0. Now down to Board and Commission's Minutes. They received this information, disabilities and special needs. Any councilman has any question referring to received minutes? No Board and Commission appointments, no old business, new business. We have one councilmember that has to recuse himself, Councilmember Douglas. Now, Item A, authorizing Fairfield County to accept 1 acre, more or less situated at 1622 Scott's Crossing Road, Williamsburg, South Carolina, tax map number 17900-01-013 from CDS Company. All those in favor? Oh, do I have a motion? I'm sorry. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, Ms.
Can we go on record to kind of just explain to everyone, the CDS Company, who it belongs to?
The CDS Company is owned by Councilman Douglas. And for further explanation, we do have on the projectors, the location of the property. It does conjoin or is adjoined to one of our existing properties owned by the county that is used for a waste collection and recycling center.
And this is given to us, correct?
It's being given to us. We are not paying for this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's approved 4-0 to approve tax map number 17900-01-013. Let Mr. Douglas -- oh, he's right behind you. Now, County Administrator's Report. Ms. Taylor.
Very brief tonight, just one item. We have Mr. Larry Salery. Is Mr. Salery in the audience? Yes, if you would. He is here. He is Executive Director of the Benedict Allen Community Development Corporation, and he has an opportunity that he would like to present to our citizens, to council and to our citizens, about the Transportation Careers Training Program.
Thank you. Good evening to council and to the residents of Fairfield County. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and present to you. As the county administrator said, I'm Larry Sally. I'm with Benedict College and the Benedict Allen Community Development Corporation out of Columbia. I want to, of course, recognize one of my board members, who's a longstanding member here in Fairfield County, Mr. James McGraw. We're here this evening to discuss the program called the Transportation Careers Training Program, which is gonna be operated here in Fairfield County. It's funded by the U.S. Department of Highways and SCDOT, and what we're trying to do with the program is identify individuals 18 years and older that are interested in careers in construction, particularly highway construction. We have funding to train up to 10 persons through the program. We're targeting six, and the program will last for about eight to nine weeks. We've been having some conversations with Midlands Technical College and with Fairfield County School District Adult Ed, which would be our training site. But the way the program is set up, the students come in the program, they receive three phases of training, pre-employment training, which focuses on soft skills, resume writing, obtaining a job, those kinds of things, flagger training, CPR. Then they transition out of that into CDL training. This is CDL permit only, so they would receive training there, qualify for the CDL permit, and then they transition into the last and final phase of training, which is to operate heavy equipment. They'll get a chance to, of course, learn to operate bulldozers, backhoes, skid steers, just a variety of heavy equipment. And at the conclusion of the program, part of my staff will be working with them to help them find employment. We understand, as well as SCDOT, that Fairfield County was impacted by the closure of the nuclear plant and some of the other issues there, and that there are a lot of individuals here that are seeking to gain employment in another field and certainly try to qualify and get their credentials. I think this is an excellent program. Throughout the program, we pay for everything except for, there is a pre-employment drug screen, but we'll be paying for the physicals, their materials, the safety equipment. We pay for all of the training. All they have to do is, they need to be at least 18 years old, they need to have their high school diploma or GED, and they need to be able to successfully complete the program. We've -- in the past, we operated a program in Williamsburg County last fall, and we trained six individuals there. Had a difficult time recruiting, but a number of those individuals have gone on to gain jobs, most of them got their credentials. They'll also be trained using the NCCER, National Center for Construction Education, curriculum, so they'll have three credentials that will make them more employable. One of the things that we're asking council is to help us get the word out to the residents of Fairfield County. We've met with some of the local agencies here, DSS. We met with Workforce Investment, Ms. Robinson. We also talked to the Fatherhood Coalition, but after eight weeks of recruiting, we've only gotten three applications. And I'll be honest with you, I find it hard to believe that there are only three people in the county that are interested in the program. Deputy Sheriff Rick Paulin, who used to be with us there at Benedict College, we miss him, has been trying to help us. We've talked to the Good Samaritan House. We've tried to reach every corner of the community. We've also sent out probably about 85 letters to the churches, but we're asking council if you can help us to identify some eligible applicants that we can put in this particular program. If we don't get the program done, DOT will be forced to turn the money back over to the federal government, and it'll go back to Washington for God knows what. But I know that there are enough individuals here that we can spend this money. It's targeting counties that have high unemployment rates, and it's really looking for individuals who, you know, traditionally would not be in these positions, minorities, women. In the last program, out of the six, I believe, three, three of the individuals were females, and we want to welcome them too. I mean, actually, they do a lot better on the equipment themselves. But I wanted to bring that information to you. We passed out some information to you, and I'm prepared to take any questions if you have.
Thank you, Ms. Salery. Any councilmember has any questions for Ms. Salery?
I just have one question. For this training, where will we be located? Are we still working on something, or?
We're still working on it. We have a tentative agreement with Adult Ed. We would prefer, of course, to work with Midlands Tech and use their training center. I will say that unfortunately, Midlands Tech couldn't provide the CDL and, matter of fact, the pre-employment training, so we had to reach out to Orangeburg Calhoun Tech, so they'll be sending their persons up here to do the training. But, you know, the facility there, the Midlands Tech has, I toured it about two weeks ago, excellent facility, it'd be excellent for the classroom training. And we've identified a gentleman, Mr. Fazio, who has a warehouse at the intersection of 34 and 321, who's gonna allow us to use that for the heavy equipment, because they actually have to go out and practice on the equipment and be qualified. But any help that we could get through council to secure that space would be wonderful.
Ms. Taylor, if we could assist with this free program with location, maybe speak with Midlands Tech, I think that'd be ideal. Or any other councilmember have any suggestion? Mr. Paul? Any other councilmember having any questions?
Is the training paid, training?
It's not. That's one of the drawbacks. We operate some other training that is, but like I said, you know, during that time, we do try, we do pay for all of the other pieces that they need for it. You know, in Williamsburg County, we were able to pay for transportation. So far, we have not been able to work that out, because I know transportation is an issue, but we will be appealing to SCDOT to at least see if we can reimburse individuals, you know, because I know if they have to pay someone to get to the site, and so it would be, but that's one reason we wanted to make sure that we had it right, right in town, so that it would be a little more convenient. I will say, when we did it in Williamsburg County, we actually had to do the training in Florence, so that was a real burden, but we had to bus those individuals to Florence every day. But if you know of anyone, church member, community member, someone's cousin, you know, we welcome them. Like I said, all they have to be is 18 and above, and in the past, we've had some folks who had some criminal history, so, you know, I don't want them to feel like they're being left out, because they can qualify also. They have to be unemployed or underemployed, meaning, you know, maybe they're working part-time, or maybe they're on a temporary job, that kind of thing, and they have to be interested in obtaining a position in the highway construction field. And like I said, we'll be working with some of the DOT contractors to find placements for them.
Thank you, Ms. One more question. What type of deadline are we looking at?
Well, we're trying to get the program up and going by the 1st of May. Realistically speaking, we're probably gonna start training the 2nd week of May, so we're really pressed to identify some candidates, because I can tell you, for every application, every slot that we have, we usually need about three to four applications for those slots, because you're gonna have individuals who may or may not pass the drug screen. Once in a while, you get an application from someone who may not have a driver's license or those kinds of things. So, you know, realistically speaking, if we could get 25 applications, like I said, we'll fill all of those slots. I've asked DOT if we could over-recruit and put at least 10 people in those positions. And like I said, it might put us in a position to be able to go back and look for a second round of funding. But any assistance that you all could give us, we would appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other councilmember having any questions?
If I may add, of course, we will do what we can to help you find applications, and if transportation is a problem, we do have a transit system here in the county, and we will be willing to use that to help get the people back and forth to the training also.
That would be excellent. That was one of the issues that we've already had to address. An individual applied the other week, and he's already saying that he's having some difficulty with that. And like I said, we would be willing to talk to SCDOT and see if they might be willing to set aside some money, so that we can try to reimburse someone for that. So, like I said, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now down to our Clerk of the Council's report. Ms. Davis.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to remind council, we had the first reading on the budget tonight. Our first budget work session will be next Tuesday. That will be, consists of the departments, and that will begin at 5:00. Council just received their budget binders tonight, and this information will be online tomorrow.
Next Tuesday, 5:00 p.m. April 16th.
Hope y'all ready. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now down to our second public comment session. Anyone sign up to speak?
We have three speakers. First, Ms. Jackie Wortman, speaking on visions.
At our last council meeting, council allowed a citizen to come forth and demonize other citizens of the county, violating council protocol. The citizens that was being demonized have accomplished many things over the last 30 years. Fought for recycling centers throughout the county, health center, fire station community room in Jenkinsville, a multi-purpose center in Jenkinsville, the Best Park in Safia County, 10 to 12 miles paved on Landis Road, a grant for $400,000 for the Fish Hook community where our current councilwoman lives. The people who come here to demonize the community organizers, what have they accomplished in uplifting the needs in the community? Attack, attack, attack with lies that are now acceptable in the society. We listen to lies. I want to share what our former representative wrote in an article. He said in the article, "I want to leave with you a quote and a definition of leadership. Let us not look back in anger, nor forward in fear, but around in awareness." To me, leadership is the facilitation of a process that empowers, organizes, and motivates people to achieve common goals and objectives toward the realization of a collective vision for the future. Leadership transforms followers into leaders who together transform society, communities, the state. I encourage you to become a leader by promoting the habits of positive resistance in our communities. So, now, I want to say, within the last three months, there have been many requests, proposed goals presented to council, but no action has been taken. Documentation was presented from FART, which approved the 8.12 acres to be removed from the hydroelectric boundaries. A recreation plan was provided for council in order that council may move forward. The community is requesting that the 8.12 acres land be included and approved for development in the 2019 budget. And that's all. And I want to say one thing quickly, since I got that time. We have our sheriff here that's not here presently, but I don't know who, and I think it's council, that increases salary. You need to increase that man's salary.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Chris Griffith, schools in Fairfield County.
I'm hesitant to go sit back down, because I don't know what kind of storm started last week or what I'm getting into, but I'm gonna tell you what I feel as a citizen in Fairfield County that lives here for three years. I want to talk about the darkest cloud that this county has, and it's the public school system and the private schools in this county. When I say white, I mean Caucasian. When I say black, I mean African-American. I don't mean to offend anybody, but I really want to talk about this subject. I'll be the first one to state, my child goes to Richland II Schools, because she resides with my ex-wife. She's 10. Personally, I wouldn't want my child to go to private school in this county, and I wouldn't want my child to go to public school, or public school in this county. Let's look around this room as citizens. We're all a diverse bunch, a group of people. Where I get confused is, when this fall flyer comes out for the kids, white kids are on one side, and black kids are on one side. Why is that? I don't understand as a citizen why that is. I hear that Dr. Green has done a lot of good things for the school. I'm not trying to take away from that. I don't know all the facts. I'm just talking as an uneducated citizen from what I see. I'm from an area in Berks County, Pennsylvania. There are 16 public schools and two Catholic schools. I understand the Catholic schools due to religious reasons. I just don't understand the reason for private school in this county, why our community does not go to school together. I don't know if anyone drives around North Richland County, but it is bursting at the seams. You drive around Lake Carolina, they're slapping houses on top of houses. And guess what? People that live in Blythewood for the past 10 to 15, 20 years, they don't want to live in Blythewood anymore. These people want somewhere to go. They want to come to the country, come out here, but they don't want to come due to the schools. So, we get the public school system correct, that the community wants to learn as a whole what industry, what other things we can add in here, doesn't matter, so we want to learn as a community. We are failing this community, and the community needs to fix this problem. And I challenge the community to fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on executive decisions.
Can you, councilpeople, please explain to the peanut gallery a few things tonight. Take out your pencil, write down this question. What do Take out your pencil, write down this question. What are your short-term and long-term visions? What's your goals and your plans for the future of Fairfield County residents? How will our lives benefit from these plans? And what is it going to cost the taxpayer? Um, that's part one. Part two, I'm sure you all heard of the letter that Jenkinsville Water Company has sent out to its members, uh, saying it's not going to join the county's effort to merge all the water companies into one unity, one utility. And you may have also heard the excuse that they're not doing this for, uh, is that if they did come in, that the county would raise the price 100 to 150% more than the members are paying right now. Is any of that the truth? We need to know that because that's what's being published in the letter. And will the end users save money, get better service, and healthier quality water than the brown sludge some have complained about? I also understand that if you disagree with comments and the beliefs of the Jenkinsville Water Company, you'll be sued. I don't doubt that. I personally don't doubt that at all. I'm saying I can prove certain things. Don't forget he's an elected official, and there are elected officials, and has a monopoly on the town of Jenkinsville. And as such, he too, or they too, are all citizens of the county. We all have the constitutional right of free speech, including Jenkinsville Water Company. And in our First Amendment, it states clearly, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment, or religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridges of freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of people peaceably to assemble," which we're doing tonight, "and to petition the government for redress of grievances." So I'm petitioning you tonight, the county government. I also have a video of a truck, a water truck, uh, taking water from a fire hydrant. Mind you, that fire hydrant had no meter on it. Um, that truck could be back filling up for weeks. Uh, the billing for that is going to happen how? If there's no meter? And where is that money for that water going? Just a few questions of what's really going on with Jenkinsville Water Company. As much as it pains me to talk in the negative about what I have seen, I would only ask that you folks look into the legality of how things like this can actually happen. And I'd be happy to show that video to anyone after the, to prove my case. And as far as the other comment, sorry irritated a bunch of people, but I told you the truth. If you don't like it, you know where I live. Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you. Now down to county council time. Would any council member like to be recognized? Ms. Douglas.
Uh, we do have a guy that speaks every three-minute session here, when he's here each time. And he knows that we do appreciate it. So I talk to him all the time. So it's no use to, you know, say we don't appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Mr. Gilbert.
Chairman, I would like to, uh, bring the orders up to date on my meetings with Providence Hospital. I've been meeting with the executives of, uh, Providence the last couple of months. And I've, uh, discussed a lot of the complaints that we've been receiving about our new ER and action that's being taken, uh, concerning these actions. And if you, if the community continues to have complaints, then please let us know because they are very interested in knowing what's going on with their ER. We have a state-of-the-art facility over there. We want everything to go well. If there's complaints, then we need to know about those complaints so I could relay it to the executive. I will be meeting with those exec, executive each month to discuss any problems or positive things that's going on with ER. Also, uh, I had my first board meeting with Providence on the 27th of last month, which was a great meeting. And I want to relay something that was stated in that meeting. Our EMS, uh, department got high praises from the Providence group. They said that, uh, they've gotten nothing but good remarks about our EMS, and I want to relay that and tell Mr. Tanner that, uh, he's doing a fantastic job as far as Providence is concerned. As far as we're concerned, we're so proud of, uh, EMS and they need to know that. That's my report. And I will, uh, piggyback off of what, uh, Mr. Doug does say. I talk with Mr., uh, the gentleman almost on a daily basis and always let him know that he's appreciated.
I think, I think we all speak with him on a daily basis. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Any other councilman? Mr. Bell.
One of the things that I keep being impressed about is the Fairfield Post. This newspaper has been done by the, um, Fairfield Central High School, Richard Wynn Academy, and the Barclay School. So one of the things I would like to see happen though is, um, we just posted the, um, the public hearing for the, for, for the budget. I would like to make sure as we post things for the county, that we use the Fairfield Post, um, as another means to do that. Although, um, the, the Voice have a large, um, circulation in the county, but many people do not read the, the Voice, but a lot of people now is reading the, um, Fairfield Post. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Douglas. Paula, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I want to briefly speak, speak to the retreat that is planned for this coming weekend. Based on what I've been told, we are committed to spend over $900 to rent someone's house for the retreat. I understand the retreat is only going to last through the morning on Saturday, and then there will be a cookout for council members later that evening. But based on the rental requirements, we're actually renting the house for three days as that's the policy minimum. There are a few things about this that I'm not in favor of, but I'll speak only to a couple and the most concerning of them. First of all, the county owns plenty of facilities where we could hold whatever meetings we need at no cost. So the expenditure of over $900 to rent the house for the weekend, in my opinion, is not a prudent use of our citizens' money. I also think meetings like this should be held in locations familiar to the general public and citizens who regularly attend our meetings. Holding meetings like this in locations that people aren't familiar with is a barrier to them attending. Further, I don't like the idea of us renting a private home for this purpose. Anywhere the council gathers, the public has a statutory right to attend. I don't think it's a good idea for council to rent and be responsible for a private residence when anybody who wants to come can do so by law because we're meeting there. I would much prefer we hold meetings such as these in facilities we own and the public is familiar with. I would just like to take a minute to personally thank a few of our county employees and recognize them for a job well done. Last Thursday, my son suffered a febrile seizure at our home. My wife quickly contacted 911 and Jontay Harris of Fairfield County Dispatch helped get EMS sent to our home in a quick manner and also managed to keep my wife as calm as possible during our situation. Also, I would like to thank the first responders with EMS, Brian Earl and April Von Adore, as they did a fantastic job of getting us to the hospital in a quick and safe manner. I feel that sometimes these employees aren't recognized enough for their hard work and dedication to the people of this county. So once again, I truly thank them for being there for us during our tough situation last Thursday. They all did a great job. I also want to disagree with Mr. Bell. I think the Voice is a great newspaper. I think a lot of people read the Voice, and we need to continue to support the Voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Ms. Douglas, you going to say something else?
Uh, Mr. Kaufman-Gilbert, um, if you really want to know about some problems that's happening at the new emergency room, you need to let people know what your phone number is because I can probably fill your ears up with some problems that they've had.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gilbert.
I have cards.
Mr. Bell.
Yes, um, and, and please, um, I guess I would, I just want to make a point of clarity. I am not, um, against the Voice. My point is that we should also publish in the Fairfield Post. A lot of people don't read in our communities the, the Voice, but the Fairfield Post is free, so a lot of people get that newspaper and it, and it's well-written. And we, it would give us an opportunity to, um, um, support the schools, Richard Wynn, Fairfield Century, and the Barclay Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Um, I just want to touch bases on, uh, the new provision that come out. Mr., Mr. Morgan, can you give us a little update on the new provision that come out 30 dash 4 dash 70 in reference to, uh, executive session?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Um, obviously that relates directly to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, and there are provisions in there, um, that allow for the public disclosure of information at the appropriate time, the fact that members of the public can come and get the records, um, that are routinely maintained by the county. Obviously, they can request in writing to get certain other records that are not available at all times, um, so on and so forth. And then the provisions specifically with regards to 30 dash 4 dash 70 talk about those instances wherein a public body such as council can go into executive session and discuss various items. Specifically subsection five deals with that economic development, um, aspect because obviously in these type of situations, that information can be extremely sensitive when you have companies that are considering investing significant sums of money in Fairfield County and that the fact that that information could get out to either competitors or other individuals could compromise whether or not an, an industry comes and provides the investment and jobs to Fairfield County. So the reasons why this type of information is discussed in executive session is to allow for council to have that information that's necessary to it, um, to be able to make any decisions with regards to the expenditure of funds, um, or any type of contractual agreements that they would enter into with a prospective industry, and also allow for the confidentiality necessary for industry to be able to present their, uh, proprietary information to council as part of that process.
Thank you. Um, also, I just want to touch bases in reference to the retreat. Myself and count, myself and administration got together and tried to come up with a place within the county that the citizens can come to as well, that we can sit down without a shirt and a tie on and discuss things openly. You know, sometimes we have writer's block, so to say, and sitting behind this desk, you, you, you may not come up with that idea at that time. So why not have a relaxed setting that we can sit down and discuss things openly? Now, as far as the, the, uh, the amount, it's only money that's being spent that council members have not went to class to educate themselves that we're using. Um, also, yeah, if, if, I, if, if it's a cookout, yeah, I'm paying for it. I'd be happy to pay for it. I'm, I'm sure you guys would be happy to eat a $10 box of hot dogs, right? That'd be good, so. I don't have anything further. Um, now down to executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have Ms. Bertha Goins online, and she would like to speak to us if council member is, is able to, uh, uh, allow that, so.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, so very much for, once again, allowing me this opportunity and to the council team as well as the citizens. Um, I'm just going to try to get right to the point what my concern is tonight. Uh, it's water. The Jenkinsville Water Company, but more so the water that is needful in Fairfield County. And it's not new. It's, um, not something that's just changing, just came about. It's been trying to happen for years and it needs to happen. But the letter, I received two letters. One, I believe, went out to the members of the company. And I'm not going to read the letter in its entirety, but just pull out a few points. Um, and one part of it, it says that, um, uh, these unfounded accusations are being aimed at the Jenkinsville Water Company. The piece that the State Paper Company did, they did it on small rural water companies, or just small water companies. Everything is changing. It needs to change. Says Jenkinsville Water Company is not in violation of any DEHAC regulations. I would advise and encourage the citizens to do your homework, check with the DEHAC, do your research, and find out for yourself how many violations the Jenkinsville Water Company has had through the years. And I'm not talking about in the past year. I mean through the years that affects the health and welfare of the community. In addition, it says recently Jenkinsville Water Company won the Best Water in the State Award by South Carolina Rural Water Association. Check with the Rural Water Association and find out what that process was. It's a demonstration that's used in Myrtle Beach during the conference that they do some little sample testing. But Jenkinsville Water Company was not awarded any special award for having the best water. If it is, then everybody should have known about it. I dropped down a little bit further. It says about the most, the purest and most dependable in the state. Surface water and groundwater has to be purified. The only difference in surface water is that it's exposed to the air, exposed to more elements. Eventually, it seeps into the ground. Do your research on the water flow under the earth and on top and how we, how we get it to our faucets and how we get it to our house instead of believing things that just people say. Because this, all of this is just false. We need to verify. Jenkinsville, and this one in particular, Jenkinsville Water Company is the only minority-owned water company in the state. When did that happen? I would like to know, when did it become an, a minority-owned water company? It's a public utility service that receives county, state, and federal funds. And if anything else is going on, then, um, then there's a serious problem. It also falls under the letter of discrimination. It is not. The company is made up of 900-plus members of every background, every color, every race, religion, or whatever. That's what the company is made up of. It was started with blacks and whites in the community because many people had wells that were going bad. They decided that if we can get water to a rural area, then that will help the citizens in the community. The community wasn't very large at that time, but common sense would say if we started it, we should always be trying to improve it to make it better because things around us are improving. Now, when you have people on board that push back and say, "No, we want to close it down, shut it down, and wholly close," then everybody in the community that's drinking water from Jenkinsville Water Company should rise up and say, "No, I want the best, clearest water that comes through, the best, and upgraded technology possible for my babies, for my children, for my grandchildren, for seniors with health challenges. I want the best." The next statement in here, um, it says that the water rate increase will be 100 to 150%. That is the foolish thing that anybody could ever say. If you even go on a cruise, the more people on the cruise, the lesser the cost. The more people involved, the lesser the cost, and the better the benefits and amenities can be presented. Deception. Go down a little bit further. It says DEHAC closely monitors our water quality via monthly and quarterly in inspections and publishes an annual water quality report. But when do we ever receive a ball water advisory? And yes, I do get, I, we took out a hot water tank, the second one, after putting in a completely new line. And we didn't put, pull up the old line. We put in a new line from the meter to the house. Had no leaks in years. But when we pulled the tank out, there was a foot of mud and crud in it. Now, when somebody tells you or anybody else what goes on in their house or what comes out of their faucet, you should have a problem with it because they don't live with you. So they can't say that you're lying or you're, you're, uh, doing a fabrication or whatever. They don't know what's going on. If you take the strainer off your faucet, you'd be surprised what you catch in there. If you look at your drain and you don't pour coffee and all kind of things down it, look how your drain eventually will turn from the water. Look at the corrosion on your faucets. Check your pipes out. All of that tells you about your water. Do your homework. Don't just take people's word for it. It comes down a little bit further, and I've always heard this one voice for the company. There's one name on this paper and a contact number. For nine- There's one name on this paper and a contact number for 900 people to contact in case there's a problem. My second letter was personal. This one, and I'm going to read it in its entirety, it says Goodwin's Law Firm, LLC. Reply to 2519 Divine Street, Suite A, Columbia, South Carolina, 29205. 11B Congress Street, Wentzville, South Carolina, 29180. P. Jeff Goodwin, Jr. C. David Beal, Jr. And it has the telephone numbers, 803-251-4517, Columbia. Bertha Goinz, CO Box 42, this is March 28, 2019. Jenkinsville, South Carolina, 29065. The reference, "False comments made to news organizations." Our file number, 3500-00-001. Dear Ms. Goinz, I have retained, I have been retained to represent Jenkinsville Water Company with respect to recent news stories and other information that has recently been spread about the company. This letter is served upon you person to all applicable South Carolina and federal law. This is a cease and desist letter requiring your immediate attention. I understand you have spoken with the news organization on and off camera with respect to citizens, with respect to criticism of the water provided by the Jenkinsville Water Company. Specifically, you spoke on camera stating that the quality of Jenkinsville Water Company was poor and contained sediments. So these false and misleading statements are defamatory and illegal, and it's in bold print, "Legal demand is hereby made that you immediately stop such illegal activities." If you continue, if you continue to make such false and defamatory statements, I have been instructed to take all legal steps to enforce my client's rights, including filing suit against you for injunctive relief, slander, and defamation, seeking all damages allowed by law. Sincerely, P. Jeff Goodwin, Jr., Jenkinsville Water Company. Now, I'm going to send a copy of this letter to many people, but I'm going to first send it to the Attorney Bar Association to find out, is this an ethic violation? Is this a freedom of speech violation from the First Amendment to stifle my rights? Or is it a personal threat? But it doesn't matter which one either one of them are. Jenkinsville Water Company has and still has management problems, have water problems. The citizens in this county deserve better. We deserve, there's now a unity between the town and the county to have water service that is clean, that is health, healthy, and of good pressure for the citizens. I'm going to continue, I didn't just start doing this when I came on council. I've been pushing for this for years. Nobody can even fathom how much I care about the people in this community. My husband has been ill for over two months, nauseated and vomiting, and they haven't found out why yet. So I'm going to go back and ask the doctors to do some blood work, and I'm going to ask DEHEC to come out and test my water at my home, not somewhere somebody else tested. I'm going to call the CDC, send them for disease control, and find out what happens when there's a possibility of contamination and health issues in the community. And I'm going to use this letter that I have been, my rights have been attempted to be stifled. I want to thank you, because you've just given me a megaphone. And not only will I talk to the press, the next time I'm in front of a camera, I will have these two letters to verify that what I'm saying is true. So I want to thank you for the push. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Chair. Ms. Bill.
Going back to the retreat, one of the things, I guess, when you sent, when we sent the letter out stating what the date of the retreat was, I had some issues with the date, and we talked about that. But one of the things is, now that, as I understand it, the retreat has already been set up, has already been scheduled. I've reorganized my schedule for Saturday. And now, are you saying that we're going to meet from 10:00 to 2:00, and we're not going to have lunch? I mean...
I didn't, I didn't say that. I'll, I'll, I'll supply lunch.
Man, come on.
I'll supply lunch.
I mean, is this a county function?
Yes, sir.
Man.
If it's that big of a deal, I'll supply lunch.
It's not that big a deal.
Thank you. All right, now down to executive session, following, it's a legal matter discussing regarding potential changes to contractual provisions as to local industry and receipt of legal advice in accordance with section 30-4-70A 5 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, now we're in executive session at 6:00.